Six thirty, I'd like to call this session of Littleton City Council's general meeting to order on May seven, two thousand and twenty-four. Mayor Schlatter is out for the evening, I'll be facilitating the meeting and as well as the study session that follows, and with that, we'll go ahead and get started. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Protembar.
Present.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Councilmember Peters.
Here.
Councilmember Reichardt.
Here.
Councilmember Ryden, we have a quorum.
With that, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. With that, we are going to take a look at the, make a slight change to the agenda. We are going to start with City Council, City Manager and City Attorney reports. We will then move on to public comment, and then I will then follow that up with proclamations for this evening. Council, did anyone else have any other changes or recommendations? Seeing none, okay, we'll start with the City Council. Councilmember Reichert, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. The most exciting thing is the paving that's going on in front of my house, I'm very grateful that that's occurring, and want to commend the contractor for, they're clearly working hard at getting this done as quickly as possible, and, and doing the, doing the job well. I think one of the other things I've noticed is that they're driving a lot of really big trucks around my neighborhood, which is part of the process, but they're driving them very slow, and I really appreciate that as well. There's been a few opportunities for improved communication, and the City Manager and I have talked about that, and I think we're all on the same page, and I'm excited about things moving forward. I would like to say thank you to Chelsea Molitor and Chief Burke from the South Metro Fire Department. Thanks to former Councilman Bruce Stallman, I was able to have a conversation with them. My neighbors, as some of you know, I live near Kettering Park, and my neighbors and I have been concerned about what could happen if we had a fire in that park, there's a lot of underbrush there, and I think while that obviously is great for the ecology and the birds that we all enjoy, it also is stuff that can burn up, so we, I really appreciate them taking the time. They came out to the park before our conversation and did a little walk through. They had a couple recommendations, and they've agreed to maybe partner with us in conversations with South Suburban on how to maybe increase some of the fire safety around the fence lines and so forth. They had some recommendations on working with Excel to make sure that the power lines are clear, and they offered to engage in some educational efforts with my neighborhood HOA around how people who live in my neighborhood can improve fire safety, and so I'm going to be talking to the HOA day after tomorrow, and so I really appreciate both their time and their offer to work, and their willingness to explain to me all the different types of fire trucks, which the little boy in me really enjoyed quite a bit. And then I want to say thank you to the Transportation Mobility Board. As you know, the Council has tasked them to prepare to talk to us about what would it mean to implement Vision Zero, and so all of the members on the Transportation Mobility Board that talked to or studied and then tried to talk to officials from, I think, seven different cities around their experiences implementing Vision Zero, and then we had, they brought forward a great conversation, and I think they are going to be prepared to make some recommendations to us around that, and they're looking forward to the conversation around Vision Zero. I will say, I had a couple of takeaways from that conversation, and they know I have these takeaways, they're not unauthorized, but they're also may not reflect their recommendations. But one of the things I, that came very clear from the experiences in these other cities is that you have to be clear about what the vision is when you have Vision Zero. Nothing's going to happen if you don't dedicate funds to Vision Zero, if that's the goal of the city. Vision Zero needs to be accompanied by concrete actionable plans. Another thing is Zero may not be realistic, and having plans that focus on what is realistic in terms of what is aspirational may be a way to keep the momentum moving forward. The third thing that I noticed, or the last, one of the things that I've noticed is, you know, there's, there's, is a little bit of competition between focusing on where most of our crashes happen in Littleton, which are around, along Santa Fe, that's where most of our injury and death-related crashes occur, and that's a very important thing, but there's a lot of conversations we also have about making the city bike and pedestrian-friendly, and the, that may be a different part of the city and a different type of work than reducing crashes and injuries and deaths related to crashes, and we have to think about kind of what are our goals, and how do we make those, make sure it's the right goals. And the final thing they said, and it's something that we've learned, I've learned, partially because of the work of Public Works Department, is that plans lead to money. That is, if you have a good plan, you also have opportunities to get federal funds, and that leads to opportunities to improve our, improve our community. And then finally, I'd like to just say thank you to the, the Next Generation Committee, we had a great meeting, I really appreciate their work they're putting in around learning around about other kind of groups and activities within the city, they, the Downtown Business Chamber came and made a presentation, the vital Littleton folks came and made a presentation, and then we had a presentation from the, the Littleton's Community Development Team, or Economic Development Team, and that, I really appreciate all those folks showing up, and I appreciate the committee's work just to learn about all the things that are going on in the city, and that concludes my report.
Councilmember Grove.
A few things, since we haven't had a meeting for a while. Last month I attended, Littleton Chamber had a ribbon cutting for one of the new businesses that just moved into Littleton, and that is W.E. O'Neill, they are a construction company. They have a wonderful building, just a little bit north of church, and a lovely workspace, and they were in Denver, and they moved down here because they liked the culture of this community, they want to be part of the community, they're very anxious to be involved, and they even said that if interested, we could put a mural on the north side of their building, which I thought was kind of cool. I also attended East Community Center, had an open house ribbon cutting, for those of you that are not familiar, it's a repurposed school, and it is open to nonprofits. We use our stadium money that we got from the sale of the Broncos, every city got a little bit, to help fund this. I think it's full, it doesn't seem to be very many empty classrooms. It's home to many nonprofits, including those that help with mental health, there's yoga classes, for those even needing bedding, so it was interesting to go into the various classrooms and see what nonprofits were there and what they were doing, so that was a great addition to our community. I, as well as many of our, my fellow council members, participated in the Leader, the Littleton Leadership Academy Panel on the nineteenth of April, and we discussed what it's like to run a campaign, to be a candidate, as well as what it's like to be a City Council person, and what's involved in that, and what are the attributes of a good City Council person, among some other things. So that was an interesting event. This morning, I attended the State of the City for Centennial, so we heard about what was going on at Centennial, Councilmember Peters, as well as Jim Blackler came along, and there was over three hundred people in the room, so that was interesting to hear what they're doing. Our State of the City is next Wednesday at seven thirty at Hudson Gardens. I also want to mention that Historic Littleton, Inc. gives historic tours to downtown Littleton on the first Friday at six o'clock, you meet at the Art Depot, and they'll take you for a walk and tell you about all our interesting characters, about all the buildings in downtown Littleton. If you haven't done it, I highly encourage it, it's free, and if you have maybe out-of-town guests, it might be something fun to bring them to to hear about art downtown. Thank you.
Thank you much, Councilmember Peters.
I'm not very good at giving the report, I need a few more hours in the day to work on this piece. The only things that come to mind, it does feel like we've not been here in a long time. The mayor and I were both at the Columbine Memorial for the twenty-five year anniversary, and he spoke at that, it was lovely. I also helped on Saturday with the river cleanup with South Platte Renew. I don't know, there's been a lot that I've done, and my lack of report is not a reflection of my care, I hope that's clear.
It is not, so Councilmember Ryden.
Yes, thank you. I had that documentary screening with our community members earlier, a couple of weeks ago, that was with Denver Postcom, is Krista Kiefer, you know, she and I both ran against each other in our two thousand and twenty-one election, and it was a film screening kind of on civility, and then we'd held a little workshop afterwards, so I want to thank everyone who attended, we had almost fifty people there, enjoyed popcorn and candy and discussion, and really thinking about moving into contentious topics, I think, with thoughtfulness. So I appreciate Krista for her volunteering her time, and hopefully we can do more together in the city. There was a challenge issued to the folks who attended to kind of report out over the next couple of months on how those exchanges go with their neighbors, or coworkers, or family members, so if I get some reports, that was the homework everyone was given, that I, I said I would share those from the dais, so hopefully we'll have some hopeful examples of people engaging on contentious issues with their community members and it going well. I also wanted to thank the Business Chamber for having me on their Women in Leadership Panel last week, that was wonderful, and I appreciated our city for having a table there and having a presence and showing how much we support them. And the Littleton Business Chamber is actually holding a joint event tomorrow at Platt River Bar and Grill, and it's going to be joint between the Littleton Business Chamber and the Inglewood Business Chamber, which I think is kind of cool, and that's part of what, what we want, right, to see more professionalized activities, so I appreciate them organizing that. Also, thanks to all who attended the final Friday's event for our downtown merchants, it was super successful, and that's where on Friday nights, they stay open later, so there's some happy hour specials at some of the partnering restaurants, so you can get a little discount at some of the boutiques and other stores that are partnering. Their next one will be on May thirty-first, and also with special thanks to all who attended our, one of our first farmers markets that we had, it's right on Nevada Street, that's going to be on the first and third Sundays from eleven to three, so the next one will be on May nineteenth, so please come and join some artisanal bread and eggs, and just enjoy being outside and enjoying our downtown. I also met with Jenny, our Executive Director of the Downtown Development Authority today. One really cool thing that the DDA has just launched is they, they have a welcome packet for new businesses, so when they get alerted that we have a new business license, or just word of mouth that there's a new business moving in, they've got a wonderful branded welcome packet that has all of our resources and information about how to get support, and where to find what, and how to post events, and how to link up with other groups, and they email directly at first with those folks, and then if they don't hear from those new business owners, they'll, they'll call them, so I think when we set out to help fund and jumpstart the Downtown Development Authority, like, this is one of the things that we were trying to do. This is part of professionalizing our business community, we want to make sure that Littleton business owners feel connected, feel supported by everybody, and then they have a really good experience, because that's the charm that is part of our downtown, and the bulk of our budget is sales tax revenue, so we need to continue to support our businesses if we want to see a thriving city. So I think that is really cool that they've launched that. I am our liaison to the Tri-Cities Policy Work Group, we're actually meeting in person, which we've, we only do once a year, and that's going to be this Thursday from seven forty-five to nine AM, and that's going to be at Sheridan City Hall, which is forty-one zero-one South Federal Boulevard. We encourage anyone who wants to understand more about what we're doing in the Tri-Cities to combat homelessness, and to map some of our prevention strategies, and where we are just strategically with that, I encourage you to attend, it is open to all. There isn't a portion for public comment at that, but we encourage folks to come and listen and meet some of the other leaders who are part of that working group. And then lastly, the Littleton Arts and Culture Board, their meeting is this Thursday at six thirty at the museum, I will come back and report on that, they're going to be working on vetting those grant requests for this next cycle for the arts and culture grants, so thank you, everybody.
Councilmember Driscoll.
It's all been said, no report.
It hasn't all been said, I have just a couple of quick items. First off, just a quick note, so USA Today just released their top five best cities to move to in Colorado, and guess who was at number one? It was Grand Junction, but who was at number two was Littleton, so, you know, a small shout-out through our comms department, that would be great, so worth putting out there. Secondly, for those who don't get the, who are not already on the email list for the Highline Canal Conservancy, I just wanted to put out a quick note that they just sound out an informational briefing regarding some of the massive investments and trail improvements that they are doing along the canal, they are looking to leverage almost a hundred million dollars of public and private funding to protect, connect, conserve the Highline Canal. It's a huge project, you know, in some of my time volunteering, I didn't realize that it passes through over, I think, fifty jurisdictions between counties, municipalities, and other authorities. It's a critical asset for us as a state, as a city, both for recreation and functionally as for stormwater management, so we're excited to see the Highline Canal Conservancy, you know, doubling down on some of these investments and investing so much in our community as well as the region. So if you haven't had a chance, please go check out their reports on the Highline Canal Conservancy website. I also attended the Dr. Cog's annual, Dr. Cog Denver Regional Council of Government's Annual Retreat two weeks ago, it was a fantastic discussion amongst other municipal officials, and quite wide-ranging, and a little bit, I always say contentious at times, talking about funding for things like regional transportation moving into the future. But just as a quick kind of highlight or synopsis of some of the things that we discussed, Regional Crash Data Consortium, Dr. Cog is actually getting that off the ground with some federal government grants. These are projects where we can take part in not only facilitating, but gathering information out of these kinds of projects. I know our Transportation Mobility Board may be aware of such things as well as our staff, but again, some of the fantastic programming that comes out of Dr. Cog. We touched on the regional housing needs assessment done for the Dr. Cog region, that was, that is essentially finishing up here in June, and will be moving on to a strategy document in July. This was actually in response to the board members' request that Dr. Cog actually play a more formal role in making recommendations for housing and development throughout the region in a coordinated fashion, and quite frankly, it was really spurned by all the discussion that is happening up on the, on the Hill. So it's a fantastic read if you can, it looks at other metropolitan planning organizations across the country, and how they facilitate housing at a regional level, some do a fantastic job in terms of providing incentives, shared services, you know, grant writing assistance, other technical assistance, some do very little, and so it was kind of a, it was a fascinating discussion and well worth looking into. A large part of what Dr. Cog does is they are our area agency on aging, quite frankly, the discussions around the funding for services to folks who are elderly is pretty discouraging right now. Dr. Cog is struggling to make ends meet, services are being, having to be cut back. Now, Dr. Cog does not have like an overwhelming dollar value in terms of the number, the amount of service they provide financially, however, a lot of those services are directed towards really fundamental and kind of critical pieces of essentially internal infrastructure to support those who are aging. That's things like data security for medical information, transportation services, food and nutrition. I, I am part of the Finance and Budget Committee for Dr. Cog, and as we were awarding grants to our service providers this last go-around, it was stark the difference between the amount of available funding in previous years versus what we have now. So it is, Dr. Cog's staff are working hard to fill those gaps and work with our state legislature to fill those gaps where they can, but the situation quite frankly is not looking great, and I think it's incumbent upon all of us, localities, municipalities, that we are going to be picking up the check for those services if we cannot come to find more regional solutions, because these are critical care services for our elderly folks. Lastly, I'll touch briefly on regional funding tools and strategies. Now, this was the slightly more contentious portion of our discussion, it was a great overview of where regional transportation funding comes from, you know, as a fun fact, local municipalities such as ours only provide about one percent or less of the actual total amount of funding that goes into regional transportation projects, both operationally and in capital. A majority of that funding is coming through CDOT, RTD, Dr. Cog, and other larger regional transportation projects. And so they are, you know, quite frankly, if you are following news, again, up on the Hill, the situation with regards to funding, a lot of not only capital, but just ongoing operational needs for transportation is critical, it is serious, it is, again, getting pretty dire. There are proposed changes being made right now in bills that are moving, but again, there may not be a solution that does not involve debruising or changing the financial structure or makeup of some of these entities, so if you, again, if you would like to look at that briefing, those Dr. Cog Board Meeting packets are available on their website. So with that, I am going to go ahead and direct things towards the City Manager and then City Attorney for their report outs.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, good evening, members of the council, I do have four, four reports tonight, so with the council's patience, I will give those. The first, I just want to give a kind of the latest on the staff's work to respond to research options for meeting the needs really expressed by residents of the Meadowwood manufactured home community. I, first update for this week would be that staff has now had a, had a request for a meeting from the residents of the Woolhurst community also, who I believe find themselves in similar situation, circumstances, given a pending offer to purchase that park and community. So we're, we have a meeting scheduled with, with representatives of that community, so that will be happening, and we'll be doing a lot of listening there, hearing, hearing a little bit more of their specific circumstances, and see how we can incorporate those needs also into the upcoming council study session on this topic. I'll reiterate the point that I made last week, that the city really doesn't have a designated funding source or, or revenue available to meet this need. Staff is working to help with a purchase is really the, the need that we're talking about. We are researching and trying to come up with an option for the City Council where we could potentially borrow some funds from, from other areas that are intended, some funds that are intended for other services for the whole community, but those are really challenging financial circumstances for us to, to help with this kind of emerging community need, although we know that it's very serious and unfortunate for many people in our community who are facing potentially increasing rents for lots of reasons in our community. I'll say that we had a really productive meeting today with representatives of the Thistle Rock nonprofit, who is in the business of facilitating financing mechanisms and loans, and, you know, really the deals that would facilitate resident ownership of these, these communities, and I know they're engaged with Meadowwood residents, and they have been, been involved also with Woolhurst, so that was very productive to just learn more exactly how those, those deals work, where the city might be able to help, how we might help with timelines with these, these groups, and how we might be able to help to facilitate the funding for these groups from potential other sources as well. So with all that, we're still working on all of those options, we're planning a study session still on, on track for May twenty-eighth, which should give us opportunity to have a which should give us opportunity to have a good conversation with council, hear any direction council might have, and then, you know, be able to communicate that with one or both of those communities. Next topic tonight, I just want to keep the progress visible that we're making on Safer Streets, Littleton. That's the bicycle and pedestrian safety efforts that we have direction from council to move just as expeditiously as we can on. I'll move through these fairly quickly. I think high on our list are those 2024 pilot infrastructure projects for the protective bike lanes and other things. Staff has refined the identified pilot project locations and we're working on obtaining equipment needed for those installations. We anticipate that those installations will begin this month. So staff is starting to place that infrastructure in the community. Also, we have the crosswalk painting for a number of new crosswalks where we need them to happen also this month. I know very high on our list are the school zone and traffic calming engineering evaluations, which will give us really the databases that we need to make any really short-term changes and important changes to any of our traffic calming configurations and also school zones. That, those, the school zone evaluation was the first one that started and we're about halfway through those observations. We're working in partnership with the Littleton Public School District and staff at the schools to make sure that we have an understanding of how those school zones are working. The third-party engineer will be completing those observations in the next couple of weeks, next probably two to three weeks, and then we'll be compiling information, recommendations, again, that back to staff. And then we can coordinate that feedback to council with the goal still of having any high-priority modifications in place before the next school year starts. The corridor studies, which are the broader studies needed to make those corridor level changes to facilitate a higher level of safety. We've decided to study the Elati Corridor first. We'll be starting on that one this year. I know there was some question about whether we could get those going this year. We've identified funding and we're working on that RFP and we'll be moving that project forward. And I'll also note that bike and ped mobility is also going to be a key focus area in the upcoming Littleton Boulevard corridor study, which council will be hearing about and giving some direction on the scope for within the next few weeks. Councilmember Reichart gave the update on the Vision Zero policy development and work that the TMV is doing. I'll mention that speed feedback signs are being installed. I went out and visited with one crew that was installing one this past week and I think those will be very helpful to us. We'll be able to activate those the next week or so so we can begin cautioning drivers with those signs and also collecting data in ways that we haven't been able to do before. Police, police education enforcement. The police department continues its systematic approach to enforcement and education in the vicinity of schools. Also, together with the school district, we're building the curriculum to be delivered by school resource officers and through other channels next fall. We're also planning a bike safety event, tentatively planned for mid-July. And more details will follow on that as they are confirmed. And finally, I'm pleased to let you know that we've made an offer for the recently approved transportation planner position that council authorized. We've posted the other position, which is the natural transportation engineer. We look forward to having these new resources onboard so we can keep this work going. Quick one, information commercial. I just want to let council know we had the annual Sheep to Shawl event at the museum this past weekend. And while we've typically had about 500 visitors for that event, we had about 1,000 visitors for that event this year. So lots of interest in those sheep and how that works. So even though I've had several reports tonight, this next one's really exciting. I'm really pleased to introduce our city council formally to our new community development director, Matt Knight, who is here with us tonight. I'll ask Matt to come up while I talk about him. I just want to let council know Matt is a great find for us, although he's been with the city for two years in his capacity as Development Services Manager. I think Keith is, Keith, I think Matt is particularly well-qualified given his blend of experience working in senior manager positions for cities in the metro area and also with the private sector and trying to help development from that side of the table, kind of seeing and working with cities kind of from all angles on development. So he has 22 years of experience with community development and he's also a licensed professional engineer. So Matt brings lots of different skills and experiences to the table for us. And he's been in his job now for several weeks. And this is kind of the first good council meeting opportunity that we've had to introduce him. So I'm going to just ask him to spend a few seconds just introducing himself and talking a little about the work ahead.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of council. I think Jim just said all of it. So I'm very excited at the opportunity to be here in front of you guys today. We've got a really great team in community development. We're really excited about the work ahead. We've got some great upcoming work on process improvement, which we brought forth to you on our development process to create some more predictability, more consistency in the work that we do. We've got some great long-range planning projects upcoming that we're excited to talk to you guys about and then some code updates and code compliance stuff as well. But biggest thing is this team is great. I'm very excited to work with them. I don't know if I was supposed to tell a joke, so I'm not. But I do want you guys to know that I did drive a Zamboni at one point in my life, which if you're hockey fans, that's pretty cool. The coolest part of that is I think I like this job more. So I'm really grateful for the opportunity to be a part of this team. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt. We're happy to have you. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Just some quick updates to set up some more updates that will follow. The state's legislative session ends tomorrow. A lot of us that monitor some of the, we'll call them bills, sometimes we can call them trash, but we'll call them legislative bills that have gone through. You know, it's been a challenging year. It often has been and recently it has been. As not only the city of Littleton, but a lot of our partners and other jurisdictions have tried to keep the state out of meddling with a lot of those types of items that from a municipal perspective, we consider to be kind of local control, local land use items to be specific. So that ends tomorrow. I will tell you, there's been 778 bills that were introduced. Not all of those will affect municipalities. Certainly a good handful do. CML has worked very tirelessly to try to get the right amendments for some of the bills that have perhaps the greatest impact on our local control. Those are still going forward as of last night or as of actually earlier today. Some of those in particular that we're paying attention to are the ADU bill. So the ADU would allow for accessory dwelling units to be built, basically anywhere in which you allow for residential units to be built. Obviously, the city of Littleton has taken a look at that and have our own kind of, I guess, our own land use requirements for where we believe ADUs are appropriate. And some of what the state has done may preempt our ability to have some control over that. Minimum parking requirements is another bill that was going through. Basically, that would prohibit local jurisdictions from prescribing the amount of parking that could be associated with not only residential developments but also commercial developments. So that has been watered down a bit. And so the city does have some, a little bit more control than what was initially drafted. But it is going to be something, assuming that it gets all the way through, that will impact the city as we take a look at individual developments coming in, where in the past we've wanted kind of more parking because we haven't wanted parking to spill out into neighborhoods. We may be impacted by our ability to limit that in certain cases. The other item that has been going through was 1313. And so that was the one that was primarily focused on increasing density and increasing those densities in and around transit areas. So if you were close to a bus line or in our case, light rail, it would require, if you will, for the city to meet certain density requirements within a certain amount of radius around those locations. That has been, a number of amendments have gone through. It's still going. But a lot of the, I guess, the penalties were removed from that. So it's been watered down. I think that bill had over 100 amendments to it. So when we say there's 778 bills that have been introduced, that doesn't count the dozens and dozens of amendments that have happened to all these. So it's certainly been a challenge to try to manage what's going on and who's introducing what and where it is in the cycle. But one of the more challenging aspects to that bill outside of preempting our land use controls was the Highway User Tax Fund. That was the penalty, that if you did not, you know, meet these density requirements, that they would take that money away. That's the money that we pay for certain things like gas. That tax goes into and gets redistributed. That got removed, so one of those penalty provisions is gone. But at the end of the day, all three of those bills, the ADU, the minimum parking requirements, and the density bill all deal with kind of eroding that local land use control. While the penalties aren't that big, it is kind of carving away at something that has traditionally been held with the city. So it ends tomorrow. I will give you all an update as to what happened and what that means for the city going forward. But it may take a little bit of time to digest all the various changes that'll be coming through. So that's all.
Thank you very much. Yeah, an email recap following the end of the session would be fantastic for council. So thank you very much. Okay, moving on tonight, we are going to start with public comment. If you wish to address city council under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of a public hearing on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive. Behavior will not be tolerated. The city council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised under public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer the matter to the city manager or city attorney for immediate comment after public comments or to staff to obtain additional information or report back to council as appropriate. Just wanted to make one quick note, that there is no public comment session associated with tonight's study session concerning cannabis regulations and code. So if you have anything pertaining to that, now would be an appropriate time to make comment to tonight's study session agenda. We are going to walk through the list that was just handed to me by the city clerk. If your name, if you did not sign up but you would still like to speak, following the last speaker, I'll ask those who, excuse me, who would like to speak to stand up and just form a line. If there, if you would like to take your name off, if your comment has already been said or has been expressed by another person, please just go ahead and just shout out or raise your hand just saying that you would like to be removed. Otherwise, we'll go ahead and get started. So first person up for public comment tonight is, I want to say, Bear Deardorf from District Four. And just as a reminder for everyone, please go ahead and state your name and your district or address or where you're coming from as part of the record. Thank you.
Honorable Littleton City Council, Protem Mayor, my name is Bear Deardorf and I am in Woolhurst, District Four. I stand before you as a seven-year resident of the Woolhurst adult community. I'm also a pastor of a church here in Littleton and I run a charity called Love Bears All, which serves people who are in crisis with physical, financial, and spiritual resources. I've been serving the Woolhurst adult community since I moved into the neighborhood and I know the struggles that they have. Many people are living on social security and/or disability benefits only and have the vast majority of their income go to rent. And many of my clients actually need our food bank or one of our other forms of assistance in order to just make ends meet each month. I've become very familiar with that. And that being said, I'm not here to gripe, nor am I here to beg for your money, which I know won't help at all. I am a man of action though, so I humbly beseech you to help us. I'm asking for your help, city staff, in helping our many Woolhurst residents who are unable to speak for themselves. Some of them are unable to speak just because they don't feel like, they don't feel comfortable being in front of this council. Many are bedridden. Many are homebound and they just don't have the ability to even come to something like this. And then there are those who are just not tech savvy enough to write an email or a letter to their congressman or to their governor or even to you all. So I'm asking for you to partner with us to help our voices be heard. We need low-income housing opportunities in the Woolhurst adult community. And it has been a place where people can come who have low income. And if something does not happen, we're going to have many who are hitting the streets. And homelessness, I know, is something that I try to combat. I know that you're trying to combat that, but we're going to have 500 people in that senior community and maybe more from the Meadowwood community who are going to be facing that. So we're seriously needing better, more comprehensive laws to provide rent protection for seniors, especially those who are on assistance and those who are 65 and older. And you are in a unique position to amplify our voices by joining with us to help us appeal for legislative help. And I know I'm looking at you, city manager and city attorney. It starts right here in this historic city and I know all of you want to really, I don't know, exemplify a historic community. And I hear that and I see that in everything that we do. We really are proud of our historic community. Woolhurst is a very historic community. It has a very unique presence in this area. And if you care for these, the greatest generation, the builders and the boomers, then I'm just asking that you would help to resolve today to stand with us, to help us to try and figure out how we can approach the powers that be and see how we can get some help. Because this is a very difficult time for all of us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Deardorf. Next up, we have Jay Ramsdale.
Hello, everybody. Good job on making Littleton a good city. So I live in Woolhurst. My name is Jay Ramsdale. I live at Woolhurst. Bear with me, I'm not used to, not comfortable at all being up here. Haven Park wants to buy us and the people who own Woolhurst want to sell us to Haven Park. They don't, we've tried to buy it with Thistle Rock. They've been great to work with. Woolhurst just doesn't want to sell to them. They don't want to work with them. And it's not, it doesn't bode well for us. Haven Park, on their website, not their current website, currently they say they build communities. Their original website, when they first became a business, it said, "We create value through aggressive optimization programs and lean property management systems. Tenant turnover is also minimal because it is very difficult and expensive for tenants to move their homes. As a result, operating cash flow is among the highest of any real estate class." We're not going to be able to live in Woolhurst for very long. I was hoping to die in Woolhurst. Now I'm trying to figure out where I can move to. We have to be around, you know, we want to stay around family and grandkids. But Colorado is expensive. I want to stay in Littleton. I want to stay here at Woolhurst. But a two-minute search of Haven Park is going to show you that we're not going to last five years. We're going to be priced out of living there. We won't even be able to sell our place. And so I'm hoping that you guys can do something. I'm really glad that you're... I'm really glad that you're involved. I thought we were a done deal. It didn't sound like Woolhurst wanted to sell to us, or even give us a chance to buy it. We put in bids, and they were good bids, but they just kept saying, "Well, we want more, we want more." And, you know, Thistle Rock, from what I hear, finally, they just kind of gave up. And we got DOLA involved. They were terrific. They caught Woolhurst and Haven Park doing things under the table, but it didn't change anything. So I'm hoping that you guys can do something, because, you know, these people here, they're all Woolhurst. And they all want to stay there, too. It's a great community.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Ramsdale. That is three minutes. I appreciate you coming up. Next up, we have Reed Berwick.
Hi, everyone. My name is Reed, hold on. My name is Reed. I'm 30 years old. I live in District Four. I'm in Trailmark. I've lived in Littleton most of my life. I'm coming to you as a citizen of Littleton, a citizen of Colorado, and a citizen of the greater world, seeing the kinship we have with fellow humans across the globe. Over the last seven months, Israel has waged a genocidal war on Palestinian people in Gaza. Over 80% of residential buildings have been destroyed. The streets have been left to rubble. Currently, the southernmost part of Gaza, Rafa, where over a million displaced civilians live, is being bombed. Tent cities are being bombed. Over 40,000 Palestinians have been killed, over 15,000 children. If you count those who are trapped under rubble, already dead, but not able to be counted yet, over 20,000 children are dead. You go to Ball Arena, and you stand on the floor, and you look up, there are enough dead children in Gaza whose lives mattered who could fill up that arena. The United States is funding that operation to the tune of billions and billions of dollars in back-room, secret Congress deals. I'm asking you today to fall in line with hundreds of cities around the country, including Glenwood Springs, to pass a ceasefire resolution. Now, I know that we are in Littleton, Colorado, and Gaza is very far away, but we are all human beings, and if we strive to be moral human beings, we will stand on the side of justice. Not only that, everybody in here, our taxpayer dollars are going to fund killing, weapons, bombs, bought with our money. We do not have access to affordable housing. Elders in our community are scared to die homeless. We do not have access to health care. We do not have money to fix roads and infrastructure. We don't have money for school, but we have billions of dollars, including hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in Littleton taxpayer money, to give to a genocide. That doesn't sit well with me. I don't think it should sit well with all of us, and if we have, if we are moral people, and we can say something, and we can speak out against genocide, we have to do it. And so I have a document, it's a resolution. I'm going to hand you one. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Berwick. You can go ahead and hand it to the City Clerk. Thank you so much. Yep, thank you so much. Okay, next up is Jody Lindrop.
Hello. My name is Jody Lindrop, and I'm just really pleased to meet all of you. Finally put a face to just a newspaper photo, and you impress me very much. I live in Woolhurst. These are all my friends. Well, not everybody, but...
We are.
Okay.
Bold statement there, but please continue.
Like Bear said, we're not here for money. We're not here for sympathy, but you must know that Woolhurst is in a very bad spot, and so is Meadowwood. You mentioned that Littleton was number two in the USA article. I think that Meadowwood, and I think that Woolhurst, could help you be number one. We are awesome. We're older, we have time, we have good ideas, we have the heart, and I think that Woolhurst and the City of Littleton could work together. You have so many events. We have probably, together, our parks, we have maybe 600 people. We could help you. We have ideas. We can get people here. So I just want you to know that I think that Woolhurst and Meadowwood could help you, support you, and you could help support us. Okay, I'm a little nervous about all the construction and all this stuff going on north and south of us. I don't want to lose my home. And I'm interested in zoning, because I think Haven Park's going to buy us. It's going to be a done deal. But I think that we could fight them. If we could fight them for, what, 20 years, then I think most of us could survive. So I'm going to be calling on you people for zoning help. I want to find, I met Jesse Street, he really helped me, so I need support people. And I think that's about it. So, but I am going to be coming to the offices. I am retired. I have lots of time. I am tenacious. I will not give up, and we have a great group of people. And I don't know how you're going to help us, but I know that you're going to help us. I know you are. We just need ideas, like Bear said, we need your resources, and so we just wanted to let you know that we're here. So let's stand up. Come on, stand up. My time's up. Thank you for your service.
Thank you again, Ms. Lindrop. Much appreciated. Okay, apologies for butchering any names, obviously, but I think this is Sandy, I want to say, Cood? Cook? Is that Cook? Sorry. So, I'm sorry, Sandy. I just, reading off of the list, I should have known better. I apologize, Ms. Cook. Please go ahead.
First of all, I'm not really very happy going behind her after that eloquent speech, okay? I want everybody to know that mine is not near as good. Well, anyways, good evening, council members. I stand here before you tonight, as many Meadowwood residents have before, to request Littleton's financial support with the purchase of our senior park. We have one mission. That mission is to be able to stay in our homes for whatever time we have left. With the purchase of our park, we can ensure that our lot rent will continue to be affordable for all of us to live in. I will leave you tonight with this thought. You've listened to the residents' stories, and their personal effects that will be put on them because of the situation we are put in. I'm not going to say the name, but we're probably going to be purchased by the same people they've just mentioned. As far as I'm going with that one. So if this Utah corporation buys us, the only thing they care about, as you have already heard, is profits. They have no bearing at all, they have no, they don't care about Colorado. They only care about their profit margin. I know you're empathetic to our cause. I know that you are sympathetic to our plight. Now is the time for you to act on those feelings. We need you to make a commitment, a commitment, and find a way to support Meadowwood and Woolhurst. Thank you. And to put it simply, we are not going away. None of us are going away. We have no intention of going away quietly into the night and ignoring this situation. Meadowwood and... Thank you, is asking for you to stand with us in this fight. We all need your support, and our future is in your hands. Thank you. And again, thank everyone here.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, and well orchestrated on your part. All right, so this next individual, I want to say, is Sheri Dequenzio. Did I get that? This was not my strongest suit in school, so...
Good evening. My name is Sheri Dequenzio, and I'm from Meadowwood. You've seen my face before, and here I am again. So I know that a lot of time, I want to thank you first of all, for your time and your conscious considerations to our situation. And I know that a lot of work and discussion has been done behind closed doors to help move this forward, and we are gratefully appreciative of that. But we're also very anxious to hear results, and know exactly where we stand. And I want to piggyback on something that Councilman Reichert said when he was describing the paving project, and that is that you need concrete plans. We also need concrete plans. We need something to know that we can count on, and we need, in order to move forward and dial this in. And I say that Woolhurst says they aren't asking for money, and I say that's baloney. We are, and we know that we have your support, and it's just a matter of, you know, dialing it in, so to speak. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dequenzio. Next up, we have Teresa, I'm going to say, Bliski? Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Duski, and I live at 6705 South Santa Fe Drive in Meadowwood. I am here pleading with the board to have the compassion and empathy to help Meadowwood Mobile Home Park seniors to keep our affordable homes that we have worked so hard to get and maintain. Our community was not up for sale, but instead, a big conglomerate came in and made a ridiculous bid to the owners, and of course, they said yes. We are not lying down and letting them take our way of life. I believe Meadowwood is one park that has the fortitude to let our community, no, I believe Meadowwood is one park that has the fortitude to not let our community go silently. We desperately need financial assistance and to be able to purchase the park. Any financial assistance or resources is most grateful. I don't have a backup Plan B, yet alone C or D. Moving my double-wide home starts at $20,000 and goes up from there, and I don't even have the land. I wish money grew on trees, or I had a rich family member, but I don't, and being disabled doesn't give me a chance to go back to work. Several of the homes have one person living in them on a very limited income. Being a Colorado native, I expected to retire here and enjoy my golden years, but this company, Haven Park, is trying to take all this away from us. We have read a great many personal accounts of residents living in the Haven Park community, and how this company raises rent exponentially, imposes crazy regulations, and is just not concerned about the people, just the bottom line of how much money they can make. If this is happening now to us, it is only a matter of time before this or another company may be after your home or community. The Buck family started our park to make sure seniors had affordable housing. Bless them for thinking about the future of seniors. We all have a vested interest in our homes and want to keep them home sweet home. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Elaine Davies.
Hi again. I am Elaine Davies, the Treasurer of Meadowwood Cooperative. Due to our fantastic support of about 75% of our members at the last meeting, I am pretty sure we are fresh on your minds, and will help us with funding in order to purchase the park. We refer to these funds as big money. Hopefully, the funds from city, county, and state will be enough to make this happen. I am very positive that it will happen. But after that, what? We will also need what we call little money. We will need funds for the transition period to pay expenses and set up accounts for reserves and contingencies. We also want to set up a fund that we call Sister Mary Margaret Fund. This fund is to help some of our neighbors who may still need help paying rent. I am working on soliciting donations as we speak. May our efforts succeed, so we can be in a good position to manage the park when it becomes ours. That's positive thinking on my part. Please do your part for the big money. We will do our part for the little money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davies. Next up, Elizabeth K. Marquetti.
Good evening, Mr. Pro Tem, councilors. I'm Elizabeth K. Marquetti, and I live in District Two. I'm also a member of vibrant Littleton. First, thank you all again for all of your time and energy devoted to making Littleton's streets safe for cyclists, walkers, rollers, and strollers. It represents a leap forward in making Littleton an inclusive and resilient community. And in service of those goals, I'd like to discuss the Unified Land Use Code, traffic studies, and improvement agreements. These are some of the most powerful tools the city has to make the streets safe. As it's written today, developers can circumvent the too vaguely-written code language, especially in master development plans, and create places that aren't actually safe for anyone outside of an automobile. Today's code doesn't require new developments to accommodate parking for electric bikes or trailer bikes. The code doesn't require that protected bike lanes, or whatever the very safest design is, get built, and provides no guidance on how they're to be designed, as opposed to the great detail that the code currently has about the design of parking spaces for cars. And the traffic studies and improvement agreements are the tools for ensuring those developments come to life according to approved plans. The Safer Streets Initiative could be implemented in the very near term across the city and contribute to an increase in people biking and walking more often by doing the following. Number one, with the very next revision of the land use code, please direct staff to write detailed language in all relevant areas so that the safest bike and pet infrastructure is designed and built with all-new and redevelopment. Two, please require traffic studies for all residential development of more than 12 homes, and all commercial development greater than 3,000 square feet, to include the safest bike and pet facilities that will increase walking, biking, and rolling to and through the development. Three, please require all development and subdivision agreements to include the installation of crosswalks, stop signs, sidewalks, shared use paths, and/or protected bike lanes, anywhere a traffic study would require off-site changes to the adjacent roadway network to accommodate a car. We'll know the Safer Streets Initiative is successful is if we have an end to people dying from being hit by a car or truck, if we see more kids walking and biking to school, if we see more people riding their bikes during work commutes, and if we never see a wheelchair user riding in the street after a snowstorm because the sidewalks are buried in snow. Revising the land use code, expanding the content and purpose of traffic studies, and strengthening the requirements of improvement agreements will accelerate and expand the Safer Streets Initiative. Those changes will finally give the city staff the tools to require better, safer infrastructure across the city as soon as those code changes are adopted. Again, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Ms. Marquetti. Next up, we have Pam Chabbert.
Let's see, I'm Pam Chabbert, and I live a block and a half from here.
Let's see, I'm Pam Chadbourne, I live a block and a half from here. So, first, I want to thank you, Mayor, for putting the reports before public comment. When that change was made several months ago, I disagreed with it and I thank you for reversing it. I think it's important that the people hear what you're reporting so they can comment on it if they wish. Second, I want us to find money to support Woolhurst and Meadowwood from the state, the county, the city, and South Metro Housing Options. South Metro Housing Options owns millions of dollars of assets in a separate account that is not public. I want that money to be made available. And so, we have SchMO. Lafayette did not. They got state, county, and city. We have SMHO and they should step up too. I'm going to say first, we need to ask Lafayette Golden and Boulder what they did. Second, preservation of these parks is good for the city long-term. We need this housing option. Manufactured home parks are the cheapest form of homeownership in the United States. They are the cheapest and we keep talking about, oh, we don't want rentals, multifamily, we want ownership. Here it is. The other thing is on Santa Fe, we're redeveloping it. If we keep these to this scale, it preserves that human scale charm and quaintness that everybody responded to envision overwhelmingly said they want in the city. We need that variety on Santa Fe. And so, it's a good investment for the city. You know, I'm kind of wondering, didn't 3A underspend last year? And that's for city capital assets like property. I'm looking for something creative to use that. Anyway, I'm not the expert, but looking at the city manager, attorney, and staff to come up with something. Thanks very much. And I guess you, to inspire them to do that. Corridors safety for pedestrians and bikes, I just want to remind everybody, it doesn't have to be corridors, we shouldn't add those to corridors. We actually should consider parallel paths like powers along Littleton Boulevard. As a bicyclist, I always chose parallel paths, so I'm not in near cars. The alternate routes are great to ride on, they're good to see, they provide additional small commercial opportunities along those parallel routes, which was the original approach that TMB said we were going to have. Now, I'm going to run out of time for the marijuana study session, but I wanted to say it's fine to increase the quantity because doctors prescribe the quantity. I'm iffy with the late hours. Inglewood has many shops and they close at 8:00 PM. Sheridan closes at 10:00. We're at the edge of retail sales and so Littleton stands to be overdeveloped with marijuana businesses if you allow this. I had more to say and don't have time. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Chadbourne. Karen Talentire is our final speaker that we have signed up on the sheet. If you would like to come up and make public comment after Ms. Talentire, please go ahead and stand, if you can, and take some time behind Ms. Talentire. So, thank you.
Karen Talentire, over across the tracks. The resolution you heard last meeting is far more detailed, researched, and far more incriminating than the stuff I've been telling you since I discovered 14-year-olds and a 118-year-old on our voter rolls. Now, I hear in Teller County, there's also a 125-year-old. I'm just an amateur, speaking from common sense, saying things like whether or not it's illegal to have nine people voting from the Essex House motel, it's clearly a bad idea and open to fraud. So, now you see, it's not just me. Serious researchers are concluding we can't use a system that came up with thousands of times more wrong registrations than a legally valid election allows. You may have wondered whatever happened with the Supreme Court case I told you about last time. The case showed clearly, those who claimed the machines were secure lied and committed felonies. It was so open and shut, the other side had no response to it, even though failing to respond incriminated their lawyers too. But the nine justices decided not to take the case, seeing as how they've already experienced personal intimidation at their homes and the DOJ didn't stop it. Unfortunately, that means it is now obvious you can lie to a court, including the Supreme Court, and nothing happens to you. Meanwhile, perjury charges were brought in Michigan against the CEO of Dominion, John Poulos. He had said under oath, the machines aren't online, but now we have the emails you've seen where Dominion employees told other Dominion employees the machines are online. That case was also ignored, so it means in Michigan, it is now okay to commit perjury. The American people can see the consequences of lawlessness. We see in many places that if someone attacks you and you defend yourself, you get sent to jail and the attacker gets free. The American people can see who is lying and even now, some courts rule according to the law. Eventually, they all will need to rule according to the law or the courts themselves will become the prey of the beast they have unleashed. So, I expect at some point, these cases will actually be judged on merit. But meanwhile, the question is back where it always should have been, at the local level. People are not as stupid as the media treats us. It is getting very hard to explain to grassroots Coloradans why we continue to use legally invalid election systems. You can stand with a few criminals, plus probably several hundred people in all of Colorado who were bribed or blackmailed into standing with the criminals. Or you can stand with the citizens of Littleton and defend your own ability to vote as well as ours. You can ask Arapahoe County why they continue to use vendors who lied to them about whether the machines were online. You can ask how they certify elections when the voter rolls have thousands of times more wrong registrations than legally allowed. You can demand better for Littleton citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Talentire. Frank Atwood? Go ahead, please come forward.
Good evening, City Council. I've handed the city clerk invitations for a potato party at our house on the 17th of May. Hope you'll come to it. I'm happy that two of you have already come and passed through. What I'd like to discuss briefly is a friend of mine in college did a paper on whether or not syntax of alcohol in southern communities caused less consumption. And what he discovered was that as they raised the syntax in order to convince the prohibitionists in the crowd that they were strongly against alcohol, at the same time they did that, they increased the hours and the availability. And so, from the businesses, they got the dollars for increasing the hours and availability and from the voters, they got the votes. And so, I'll be intrigued this evening to watch the discussion with regards to marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Atwood. Would anyone else like to come up and speak? Please come forward.
Linda Christopher. I'm kind of new to Littleton.
Sorry, could you say your name again into the microphone? Thank you.
Linda Christopher. I'm kind of new to Littleton and fairly new to Colorado too, because I grew up in a small town. It was a square mile, one main street. Everybody was related to everybody else, so you couldn't get in trouble. And it was a way of life where I'd never locked my doors. People were walking the streets in the evening, chatting, and the sense of community was just so valuable to my formation and the formation of my family. And I've lived in five states since I left that small town and I thought I'd never find that again. But I'm in Woolhurst and I have that. It's not just about the money we need. It's not just about where we want to spend our older years. It's about the impact on families and on communities and on a way of life that is American. Many of us are here because our grandchildren are here. So, if I can't live in Woolhurst, I probably can't live in Colorado, which means that impacts three families who are working and need my help to take care of their children. And I'm not the only one in that situation, I'm certain. It impacts the workforce. I'm a teacher, I still work, and I have several neighbors who would be affected and not be able to do their jobs, which affect the community at large. So, when you're thinking about how you can help seniors in Meadowwood and Woolhurst, please think beyond the dollars. Think about the way of life that is important to continuing for our youth. They need their grandparents, they need their families. Think past the dollars into something that's intangible, something that's hard to explain if you haven't experienced the wealth of that community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, ma'am. With that, if there are no other speakers for tonight, we'll go ahead and conclude our public session, our session of public comment. Just for the audience to be aware of, I'm going to go through two proclamations and then we will start on our consent agenda for the evening. If you do need to take off at this time, that is totally fine, I'll just be reading from a script. So, thank you to everyone that has come out for this evening. Okay, and with that, we are going to move on to two pro tem mayoral proclamations tonight. Yeah. First is going to be Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Sorry, let me reorient the microphone here. So, really excited to have these two proclamations. Oh, I apologize. City manager, city attorney, did you have any comments as the audience is on their way out this evening?
No, Mayor Protem.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. So, now moving on to our two proclamations. The first proclaiming May 5th through May 11th, 2024, Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Littleton. Whereas, the office of the municipal clerk exists throughout the world and is the oldest amongst public servants and was one of the first governmental positions created by early colonists. And whereas municipal clerks have responsibility to maintain municipal records, the city code run elections, and other duties statutorily required. And whereas, the municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, the office of the municipal clerk has become the hub of local government, providing the professional link between citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies at other levels. And whereas, the office of the municipal clerk serves as the historian of the community and is charged with protecting its history. And whereas, the professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibility of their office through continuing education and annual meetings of local, state, county, and international professional organizations. Now therefore, I, Stephen Barr, Mayor Protem of the city of Littleton, do hereby proclaim May 5th through May 11th of 2024 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week and further extend appreciation to our city clerk and deputy city clerk for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the community. And with that, I will just say too, on a personal note, I think our municipal clerk has done an amazing job at orienting this council, our staff, our new city manager to the city, and you know, that gratitude can't really be expressed in a proclamation. So, again, thank you, Colleen, and thank you to your staff and Wendy as well. City manager, did you have a comment?
Why, thank you, Mayor Protem. I will just add to your thanks. You said it quite eloquently, just our city really couldn't operate without our city clerk's office, given that link that the city clerk's office is for the community, to the organization, and to the council. And I also personally, and my personal thanks to our city clerk and the city clerk's office for the continued support with all of our systems that make things work here. So, thank you, Colleen.
Thank you again. No city attorney, you don't need a comment for that either. Okay, you can get the next one. The next proclamation is proclaiming May 6th through May 10th, 2024 Economic Development Week in the city of Littleton. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council, the largest professional economic development organization, provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Development Designation, and the Entrepreneurship Development Professional. And whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas, economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which is the hallmark of the American economy. Whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. And whereas, economic developers work in the city of Littleton within the state of Colorado. Now therefore, I, Stephen Barr, Mayor Protem of the city of Littleton, do hereby proclaim May 6th through May 10th, 2024, as Economic Development Week and remind individuals of the importance of this community celebration, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better. And we do have a member of our economic development team standing in tonight. Any comment from economic developers or?
I can comment, but I would ask Brian Garner, our interim economic development director, to just step forward and perhaps receive the proclamation. We'll still let him come forward. And I'll just say that our city is fortunate to have economic development professionals who work creatively and collaboratively with our businesses, both really focusing on growing our businesses that are already here and also marketing Littleton and attracting the business that we need to stay that vital community that we all want to be. So, I would just thank them for that and it's great that we can recognize that contribution to our communities.
Good evening. Sorry for all the recitals, that was a lot. As you were going through them, I'm like, maybe we should cut that back next year. It's a little long, but appreciate it. I think we're doing all the things. We're down a person now, which is hurting a little bit, but we'll make it work and we couldn't do without your support, so we're very appreciative for your support.
Thank you, Brian. And you are currently our acting economic development director, for the time being, correct?
I'm a good actor, yes, sir.
Yes, you are. All right, thank you. Appreciate your service to the community and to our city serving this acting role. So, thank you.
And Mr. Garner, you know, I'd be remiss to not point out the amazing job that he's done in the one day that he has been acting as interim director.
Three days.
I thought it said the sixth. I've noticed we are more vibrant in those last three days. And with that, thank you, city attorney, for your comments as well. And moving on, we are going to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed at the request of a council member, and I'm going to go ahead and go through those now. Ordinance 10-2024, ordinance 10-2024, and ordinance on first reading, amending the 2023 Littleton Stormwater and Flood Management Utility Enterprise Budget. Item B, Resolution 62, 2024, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Littleton and the Colorado Department of Transportation for reimbursement of costs associated with operation and maintenance of traffic control devices on state highways within the city limits. Item C, Resolution 63-2024, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Littleton and the Board of County Commissioners of the county of Arapahoe, state of Colorado, regarding a financial contribution for resurfacing of Ken Carroll Avenue. And item D, motion to approve minutes of the April 16th, 2024, regular meeting of city council. Council, any questions, comments, or items to be removed? Seeing none, we are going to go ahead and open a vote if I can push buttons.
We need a motion and a second first.
Can I get a, go ahead and get a motion for the consent?
I move to approve ordinance 10-2024, Resolution 62-2024, Resolution 63-2024, and ID number 24-118.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and put that to a vote.
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And with that, item nine is general business. And with that, item nine is general business, of which we have none. Item 10 is ordinances on second reading and public hearing, of which we have none. And lastly, that brings us to adjournment for the evening. We are going to take a ten, five-minute, five-minute break, and we will convene our study session. Thank you, everyone.
I love that you're leading this one.
Session for the evening, we only have one topic on the agenda, marijuana licensing review. review.
I love that you're leading this one.
Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, something, yeah, something, you know, relative. Yeah. Anyway, I'll stop there and not go off on my usual diatribe, but we're going to have a presentation. We're going to hear from a number of staff members tonight. Tonight, we're also going to be confining the topics to the three specific kind of question areas. So yeah, if we can get the staff all ready and on deck to kind of provide some feedback and some input on this, that would be great. And then I guess we'll hand it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Tonight, we do want to visit with your council, hear your direction, answer your questions about cannabis retail operations and the rules that associate with that. As perhaps all of you are aware, Littleton has had retail cannabis approved by voters since, or I guess, yes, since November of 2020. And we've also, we also were one of the first communities, as I've learned, to, since then, we have some experience. We had both from a business side, both from a safety side. Brian Garner from Economic Development and Division Chief Gene Enley are here to answer questions and comment on our experience from both the business and a safety side. And we've also had, I know, Economic Development and our city attorney's office has had some conversations with cannabis industry or cannabis sector representatives who, you know, feel that we are of sync in a couple areas with the market around us for regulations that we'll be talking about tonight. I do want to point out that this is an important part of our business community now. The retail cannabis sector, if you will, three businesses comprise about $1.2 million in sales tax for the city, which is very significant. So I think, you know, now that we do have experience with the sector, we now can talk to you. We want to just kind of share a few of those feedback points that we've heard from them and speak to the potential changes that we think could be made, and we just would like to hear your thoughts and hear direction on whether you would like to make those changes. So with that, I'll turn it over to Reed, who's done a lot of the research and potential regulation development and has done another very nice PowerPoint, and we can go from there, so.
One last helpful piece of context, Reed, thank you before you get started, is for our previous council members. This came from the private legal counsel of one of the dispensaries that we have here in Littleton. As a result of us discussing potential retail recreational sales tax increases to match what other jurisdictions surrounding us were doing, legal counsel, their legal counsel came to us with some of these recommendations as we were considering that tax. Now, obviously, like this, our discussion tonight is not about the tax. That is still on deck. However, just for some context, the things that we are discussing tonight, obviously, will have an impact on potential future revenues if we were to decide to not, well, even if we don't decide to increase that recreational sales tax by that marginal amount, it'll still have an impact on their revenues. And anyway, I just wanted to provide some context for where that originated, this, these recommendations originated from. So anyway.
Yeah, well said, Pro Tem Barr. Yeah, they did come to us, and this was when we were considering kind of some of the sales tax as perhaps an alternative to raise revenues within the city that, you know, instead of raising sales tax, you know, here are some considerations. And they were consistent with apparently what they had seen in some of the other jurisdictions. So yeah, by way of a history lesson, oh, no, I didn't know I had an animation.
Good animation.
Apologies. So this is just some background in regard to how marijuana came to our state. It was really in November of 2012, which was Amendment 64, that came through. That was what allowed for recreational or retail sales of marijuana within our state. What that did at the time is, is it led to a lot of scrambling, scrambling to the point of the city and most cities in the Colorado area, Denver metro area, passing moratoriums. And those moratoriums were, we can't have retail shops coming in until we know what the state's rules are going to be. And so that's something that the city of Littleton actually did back in 2013, is they passed a moratorium saying, we're not going to have these shops come in until we have a little bit more guidance. Obviously, for those that remember, there was a lot of concern about how this would be received in our community, what it would lead to. And I think some of those concerns provide some of the basis for some of the regulations that the city actually initially adopted, which we'll get to in a minute. So I won't bore you with all the background information, but it was interesting that in November of 2013, when we had this moratorium in place, that we actually took a ballot measure, our ballot issue to our voters, to approve an additional 3% tax on retail marijuana, recreational marijuana, which passed. And it passed at a pretty good clip. I'd say it was about 65% of the voters actually supported that additional tax on recreational, something that we weren't actually allowing within the city. And that was actually confirmed by our city council in 2014, where council voted four to three to prohibit retail marijuana businesses within the city. And so that lasted all the way until 2020, where another citizen initiative came forward asking that we allow for retail sales, which passed with 64%. So as I had stated, you know, back in 2010, this is when the city was adopting licensing regulations, and it primarily was for medical. That's what was allowed at the time. And our licensing provisions are within our business licensing provisions of Title III. That's where we govern a lot of various different things, including, you know, how one goes about getting a license. Obviously, some of that is decided by state law, but we have our local licensing authority who goes through that process. It had things in regard to how your license gets revoked, a number of kind of administrative things that go through the regulation of that type of business within our city. Additionally, some of the key specific items that our current licensing provisions govern are, we set a number. We set a number of medical that could be within our city. We set it at four. That's not unusual. Perhaps the number's unusual, but a lot of other jurisdictions within the state still currently set a maximum amount of marijuana, whether it's medical or retail. So there are certain limits.
My understanding is we only have three of those that are.
Pardon?
Do we only have three of those currently?
Correct, currently. We allow for up to four.
Yeah, but three are.
Medical and three retail. But we also have dual licensing. So we currently have a vacancy in regard to a medical. So someone could come in and get a medical marijuana license, and if they could find an appropriate location for that business, they could do that. But right now, our three existing are also doing retail. So along with the other licensing requirements, we have distance requirements. And the distance requirements, as we analyze what our code says versus what a lot of other jurisdictions' code says, is pretty consistent. Most of them provide those distance regulations from, you know, a school, a park, an additional dispensary. They don't want a bunch of those all grouped together. And so it's certainly about 1,000 feet. That's pretty consistent. 500 feet I've seen in certain locations, as well as the hours of operation. The city of Littleton came in at 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, seven days a week. So that's when, whether it's medical or whether it's retail, those are your hours of operation. We also, and I think this harkens back to perhaps some of the concerns that perhaps city council had at the time that marijuana was becoming legalized within the city, is we set a square footage maximum. And that maximum is your floor area. What you can have is actually floor space. You could have office space in the back, but it's 2,000 square feet. I don't know how we came to the number 2,000 square feet. I don't have the history for how we came up with that number. But I will tell you, as we'll get to in the next slide, taking a look at what other jurisdictions do, there's very few that actually set a minimum or a maximum square footage. And I think back in this time, we were probably concerned about kind of this, I'll call it Walmart, but we have our own history with Walmart, a big superstore coming in, selling marijuana. I think that was probably a concern that city council had at the time. We also had established within our licensing provisions, an amount, and that amount was a maximum for medical was two ounces. And since then, that has been amended. Two ounces is still kind of standard, but there are times where a physician can issue a licensed physician, certified physician could issue a, basically a letter on behalf of someone, generally if they lived in a really rural area where it's difficult for them to go back and forth to a dispensary, generally for those that may have mobility issues, that may be more homebound, and that inconvenience of them having to go, it would allow for a physician to be able to prescribe a larger amount in terms of quantity. So I apologize, the list started off small, and then I think I got bored, so I started looking at what other, a bunch of other jurisdictions that had allowed retail. Obviously, where the city of Littleton, perhaps it's not obvious, on a map of kind of where retail is allowed within the state, specifically the Denver metro area, as you've heard before, as you heard last year when we discussed the sales tax potential, we're about the furthest southern jurisdiction. So we're in, as far as the Denver metro area, we're the furthest south. So a lot of locations, Douglas County really has not supported retail marijuana. I know a lot of other jurisdictions, this comes up every couple years. Someone puts it on a ballot, sometimes it passes, sometimes it fails. Primarily more to the south of us, it fails. I think the closest to the south of us is Palmer Lake, which would be just west of Monument, if you've been down in that location. But obviously, there's a pretty big gap as you go through Douglas County to where one can legally purchase retail marijuana. So to council member Barr's point, we did have someone from the cannabis industry who offered basically three requests. And those requests were, change our hours of operation, get rid of the arbitrary square footage, and allow for us to potentially sell more medical to those persons with unauthorized prescriptions. So in taking those three items before us, this is kind of the focus of taking a survey of where we So in taking those three items before us, this is kind of the focus of of taking a survey of where we stood in terms of. Our own licensing provisions to make sure they're either consistent or competitive from a business standpoint within the Denver metro area. So if you'll take a look at the hours of operation, it's nine to ten. I'd say for the most part, outside of some of the larger cities. Like Lakewood, Aurora, Denver, Fort Collins. Ten o'clock is pretty consistent, you'll, I mean, you obviously see some midnights in there by and large. But in and around us, probably the the big outlier is actually the city of Inglewood. Theirs is the latest that they sell is eight PM and and that has to do. I'm not sure why, but that's what was established when they legalized retail marijuana in Inglewood. So outside of that, everyone is either ten PM or later. The hours requested by the cannabis industry were, you know, allow us to do eight to twelve. Eight to twelve is is state law. That's that's the maximum you could have, so just make it consistent with state law. There's a lot of other jurisdictions that that have done eight to twelve. But by and large, I think what we see in our areas is kind of eight to ten, so we have nine o'clock. So we're the only ones that have kind of a nine o'clock start. Everyone else is starting at eight o'clock in the morning. So moving on to the square footage, outside of Boulder and Lafayette, who I believe just copied Boulder. We're the only city that has this maximum square footage allowance. So no one else within their code actually sets that out, so we would be inconsistent with what we see in the Denver metro area.
Do you want me to visualize what two thousand square feet is?
I'm looking at you.
I know, maybe. This room?
Probably.
A little bigger.
Maybe a little bit bigger.
Man, yeah.
It's pretty close. Like i- in terms of a size of a store, I would imagine it probably is maybe the floor space of, say, like a. Perhaps a midsize gas station, the interior of that, if you were to go in there, perhaps a seven eleven type thing.
But that's their total floor area too, right?
That's their total.
Their storage areas, it's includes.
This is, this is the floor, so you could actually have office.
Yeah.
That's that's not accessible.
Okay.
Yes. But it's relatively small. I'm sorry, we don't have a comparable for you. And the last consideration was the quantity restriction for medical. As I said. When you go through our licensing provisions, we specifically called out the two ounces. Since that became law, it changed to allow for this physician's note. And while I say state law and a bunch of these other, well, every other one, I won't say that it refers to state law. I would just say it's blank. It doesn't call out a specific amount. So in our licensing provisions, had we not called out specifically two ounces. We would default back to what state law says, which would be two ounces unless you have a a physician's note. There are some jurisdictions out there, this doesn't have to do with medical, but I'll just, I'll point it out because it's mildly interesting. But they'll put quantity restrictions for retail for people out of state. And so in some of the more mountain towns, where you have perhaps the skiers coming in, they put a quantity restriction. So if you are a resident of the state of Colorado, you can purchase, say, you know, one ounce, but if you are out of state with an out of state license. You know, you're allowed for maybe a quarter of an ounce, so it's it's different quantity restrictions. But outside of us calling it out specifically, the, I mean, that would be an anomaly, so. Those are the the three things for council to consider tonight is provide some direction in in terms of if you wanted to adjust our hours. Our allowed hours of operation. To potentially remove or refine that square footage requirement and to be more consistent with state law by removing that that two ounce maximum.
I think we've got a summary slide. If you wanna.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, as mentioned, you know, current regulation, you know, nine AM to ten, that's what we have. If council wants to make an earlier start, eight o'clock, if they're comfortable with making it perhaps more consistent. Not necessarily with what we might see around the Denver area, although there certainly are, but consistent with what we would see from alcohol liquor stores. Most of those are allowed to operate until midnight. That's what the city of Littleton allows for. And so perhaps some consistency, not necessarily among kind of our our neighbors, although we have it, but more for this sort of industry along with alcohol. The square footage is currently two thousand. If council did not feel comfortable with perhaps. Removing that provision entirely and still had some concerns that we're gonna get a giant Costco of marijuana. Perhaps from an incremental approach to to limit it to four thousand square feet. So that would kind of limit the potential chances of it growing into, no pun intended, something bigger than than what it is that we would feel comfortable with. And again, with the two ounces, just referring back to state law so that we can automatically track when there are changes at the state law level. And something happened, but I believe that's what I have from just the legal standpoint as an overview of our licensing provisions.
If I could just, Gene, if you could just just comment on the law enforcement, safety, just experience that we we've had. Is that was one of the drivers probably for the for current rules?
Sure. So, you know, listening to the history lesson, which was actually pretty valuable. I do remember when when some of these laws changed, we were, we were really gearing up for like, what is this gonna bring us? Is it gonna bring a lot of crime to the community? Are there gonna be more DUIDs driving under the influence of drugs, things like that? But as we went through this, we really saw no change in our crimes. Probably the biggest thing that we saw around some of these dispensaries is parking issues. That was the biggest complaints we got in some of the in some of the areas.
Us too.
Yeah, parking, it's always parking. We, you know, we have seen break-ins at some of these dispensaries. The good thing is the state has has, the state has regulated them so that they have to have certain security in there. And I think they're pretty, they self govern too, and they put some of the best security that they can get in these places. So really isn't eliminating those break-ins that we've seen in the past. I I will say i- in the history of Littleton, I think there was a robbery, there's been a robbery at these places, but that is very, very rare. Crime around these these places, if if I were to predict when this happened, I would have said we're gonna be there all the time, we're gonna be taking reports all the time. I would have been completely wrong. We're not seeing a big crime in and around these areas.
I would guess the biggest source of crime is the lack of access to the banking system and that's beyond our capacity.
Gene, can I ask you a more specific question related to the hours of operation? Because I think that's the one that's probably most pertinent or relevant to your officers and.
Troop trolls.
Would you, you know, truly asking this question as a open ended, not looking for an answer, but. As far as the difference between a ten PM closure versus an eight PM or a midnight closure around these facilities. Would that have an impact on your officers, patrols, or any sort of like nuisance complaints that we may be getting from residents around the facilities?
So so as I think through it, I think staffing first and and the staffing that we would have around those times, whether it be eight o'clock or midnight. Are gonna, it's gonna be the same staffing. So we'll be able to handle whatever is is happening with that staffing. Complaints, we may get a few more complaints the later it goes. Because people are trying to go to sleep, go to bed, and if there's apartments, which some of these have apartments right by them, we may get some complaints the later it goes. You know, there's no real way for me to know that until it is midnight.
And I would say an argument that the cannabis industry would 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 proffer would be that, well, you can spread out the. You know, the customers over a longer period of time, so it actually alleviates traffic complaints.
Absolutely.
I don't necessarily buy that, but that's an argument that they would make.
Is there more thinking in parallel of liquor stores versus dispensaries? For the liquor stores that are allowed to stay open until midnight, do we have more complaints between ten and midnight than we than we have between eight and ten for our liquor store?
No, I would say we don't.
Okay, thank you.
Before we move, unless anyone else has a question for Gene related to the hours, before we move on, I'd like to talk, ask, talk with Brian or have Brian talk with us. About some of the economic impacts and I'll preface this too by saying, like, the industry in and of itself is having an inordinately difficult. Couple of years. It has been truly challenging, however, the landscape is changing on a federal level now, which may alleviate some of that that financial distress, but. And, you know, Brian, I wonder if you could speak to kind of what some of these options might mean to us locally or for our revenue and their stability, quite honestly.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the question. So I mean, not to oversimplify that, but, you know, one point two million a year, last year was. A hard number to ignore, right? And so I think from our perspective, you know, tweaking these hours to make it available a little bit longer. And square footage a little bit bigger may bump that up just a little bit, that number up for us a little bit. So we we've talked to some of our retail industry people there and we know this is a meaningful change for them, so. You know, they support it, we support it, I mean, that's kind of where we land on it.
I guess what we can do now at this stage is maybe if we want to just go through, you know, issue by issue, hours of operation, we can kind of knock that out. And maybe person by person to say where folks stand on it, so council member Driscoll.
Sure, you know, I I'm okay with all the requests. My only concern, of course, is the neighbors and parking has has been told. I don't, you know, I would rather not see eight AM, I mean, having doors open and closed at eight AM, I would say let's stick with the nine o'clock and. And, you know, if we can't agree on twelve o'clock, then maybe a good compromise at eleven o'clock in the evening. The increase in amount, I I say let's go with state law and then eliminate the square feet. It seems like it's, though, it's just the one store that's really asking for this. I'm not even sure where the other two stores are. I'm sure you are, hear a word. So I are they having, are they on the same on board with these?
I I haven't spoken honestly with any of the retailers about any of this.
Yeah, it's okay.
Have you, Brian? You said you did, Brian?
We've only spoken with one, so.
And that's instead?
It is, yeah.
Yeah.
Where are the other two?
Is it tree?
Ascend.
One total?
Yeah.
It's a little, little bit hard.
Yeah, you have Ascend, which is right out of Santa Fe.
Yeah, deterrent.
Oh, sure, okay.
And I can tell you with Ascend, they may be a retailer that could benefit from the removal of the square footage. They have a pretty large building which they can, they're not using a lot of that, they're using a lot of the space, but they're not maximizing.
And where's the third, please?
Are they in more of an industrial area?
Right next to Sanders Workshop.
Yeah, whenever you go.
Christmas tree.
You get some Christmas ornaments and then some.
That's what I was.
Animals. No.
Then the other one is the right across street from ARC, right?
Yeah.
I don't know the name of that, any of them.
The dispensary, Littleton.
And I I know that we did put out the word, I know we contacted the other two, two retailers, I believe, last fall. But they chose not to engage on the questions. So to sum it up, I really don't have a concern about any of their requests and it's, but really it comes to the neighbors and. I wish some neighbors would have been here if they had a concern.
I I will maybe even put an idea out there. I'll reserve my comment on the actual issues, but one consideration we could make is maybe to just. Ask our our businesses to alert the kind of residents in just the immediate area a postcard telling them that the hours have changed. You know, might be one consideration, just to, again, be friendly to our residents if they notice that more cars are coming or going at different hours than they're used to. Think that could probably instigate some some complaints, so we could probably be a little proactive about that, so just wanted to throw it out there.
Just to respond to what Pat's saying, I had a citizen complain about a host of things, parking, noise, loitering, all sorts of stuff. Economic development, went and talked to them, Kathleen from the city's office, and I never heard anything else. From that, so I don't know if it's resolved. I tried to reach out to the citizen, their phone number was out of order. I don't know if they moved or what, but it it was one citizen. So you you weren't.
Yeah, I recall Cindy tackling that when that happened, that was some time ago, but yeah, no, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions in my ignorance. Is there a limit on what you can buy recreationally?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a quantity maximum.
What is it? What is she said, a maximum?
Let's see what the Googles say.
It's two ounces.
Two ounces.
Two ounces?
Is it two ounces per retail? Everyone's looking at Steve Martin. I don't buy the limit.
I think it is two ounces.
I think, I think it's two ounces.
I was just curious, I didn't know.
Yeah.
I mean, it seems strange, otherwise you would just buy it recreationally, right?
I should know, this is.
Well, there's.
Significant price differences between medical and recreational.
According to a neighbor in the city, one ounce of retail marijuana, eight grams of retail concentrate. Or products of up to eight hundred milligrams of THC in a single transaction.
Coma inducing levels.
That's what Denver says.
It's one ounce, one ounce for retail.
And then my other question, I guess, is around enforcement and having a teenager, which is so much fun. Apparently, you can buy these things through the internet as well. Does that, is there a way that we enforce that and not, or can our stores sell online?
I don't think there's online sales for our stores.
Okay.
Now, enforcing something like that for for people getting stuff through.
Sure.
Internet is is pretty difficult.
Well, I assume most parents' concerns are gonna be like, how is this gonna affect my kids in my neighborhoods? Is changing the hours really gonna be that much of a deterrent? Are they just gonna drive, well, I was gonna say to Inglewood, but apparently not.
They're going to Denver.
Trees in Inglewood.
Delivery and is there state legislation that may impact delivery coming up or changing?
Well, okay, so for for retail marijuana, so it it's like alcohol in the sense that it's, you have to be twenty one or older. For for medical, you could actually get, you know, for eighteen, if you're, get some fancy doctors now. They do allow for delivery, the the state passed a law that allowed for cities to opt in. If they wanted to allow for delivery of marijuana to come into their jurisdiction.
Like DoorDash?
We have never opted into that, so we don't allow, and it's actually specifically set forth in our licensing, that we don't allow for delivery of marijuana to be occurring within our city.
Like you would DoorDash it?
It's their own private deliveries or it's very different.
It's not like a, group up comes right after.
Yeah. The group up comes after.
They just follow the marijuana.
Liquor is allowed to do that.
I mean, as I was reading like this before, I guess I felt like maybe I was missing something because the two thousand felt arbitrary, the. Yes, the hours felt kind of arbitrary, so I guess this is kind of helpful. I'm a little hesitant to say my opinion because I don't, I haven't heard much from people. Like for the hot minute I was on licensing, I feel like the marijuana license, the license by the one at the ARC came up and. I heard a lot from parents and people who were concerned about proximity to schools and stuff like that. From this standpoint, I guess it feels like to limit the hours or the, any of these things limits our tax benefit. And it's not really deterrent enough to keep people from going really close, so. I haven't heard from citizens to have a more informed perspective, but I guess otherwise it makes sense to do what we're being asked.
Put you as a neutral leaning slightly.
The hours, I guess, is what I'm most hesitant on and I'm surprised by Inglewood's hours the most because I feel like that's where.
So if we do get direction to make any changes to the licensing provision, obviously, we'll we'll make changes to the ordinance and we'll come back. We'll have a public hearing where members of the public can come and voice their concerns over whatever the hours of operation are and. Council could make certain amendments from there. I would say from a legal perspective, you know, council can obviously do what it is that they want. We have economic development saying that perhaps changing the hours of operation, removing the 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 square footage and two ounces may help from an economic standpoint. Allow for businesses to be more successful and thereby the city generating more sales tax. We have our deputy police chief saying that it's doesn't necessarily isn't, at least from a. Police perspective, isn't going to lead to more crime. I would say the hours of operation are probably the one where the nine o'clock is is the one where, you know, perhaps eight o'clock makes sense. That's what all the other stores in and around us start at, whether or not ten o'clock is is appropriate still or twelve o'clock. That's really what we want council to weigh in on.
Yeah, the hours is what I'm most hesitant about, I guess, the two thousand and the two ounces.
Do you have a something like to suggest for for the hours, so we can just try to get some consensus amongst the.
I mean, I guess part of my thought is I'm concerned that liquor stores are actually gonna start closing because we now sell liquor in grocery stores, so I don't know if the hours. Tying them to that makes sense, but I I mean, I guess I would wanna hear more from what people think, like, I don't feel like my opinion is.
Simply because, simply because you allow a business to s- to be open later doesn't necessarily mean they're gonna stay open. I know there's a lot of. Like I know there's a lot of liquor stores that probably close at ten o'clock.
But we're being asked by this industry to make these changes.
We, we did receive their request, council did receive their request, yes.
Kennedy, wake and big advocates have come to us.
Specifically one retailer.
Correct, one retailer made these suggestions. Councilmember Ryan.
I don't have any strong opinions on this. I am, of course, in favor of, you know, equitable business practices. I think being consistent with state law is good. I have no issues advancing this as recommended with all, all that is fine, like, like Patrick said. But I agree with Andrea, like, my mind's not made up. I wanna hear how it's going, how, how our community feels about it because I don't think they've, it's been vetted by them. I would love, I like your idea about being a little proactive and making sure though that in that messaging and those postcards is the city council is considering changes in these areas. We would like your input.
Oh, I would, well, I guess to clarify what I was getting at was if we were to have made a change to notify residents in the surrounding area, not necessarily solicit their input for it, but I mean.
I'd like to solicit that input.
No, no, I would say, you know, to your point.
Right, I have a good idea because it's affecting those people the most.
When I get another question?
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm thinking specifically about the one that is on Littleton Boulevard because right behind that is all residential. The two others that we have are surrounded directly by commercial. Um, yes, maybe a block or two blocks away, there is like apartment complexes. But that one in particular, where we have had some parking complaints and things like that, I, I really would like to know their opinion on all three of these areas.
Okay, so in terms of giving staff a direction to.
I'm fine with all three.
Fine with all three?
Yes, and to advance it to the people, but it don't, I wanna be clear that my opinion is not, yes, these are all great. I agree with them. My opinion is, hey, if our community is in support of this, I see the value of the economic piece. I love the idea of being consistent with state law. I like those things. But I wanna hear from the people. Let me tell you about that.
The other question, just out of ignorance, when we passed it, did we say the tax dollars had to go towards anything specific or it was just?
This is a general fund, yeah, revenue.
Yeah, originally, back in twenty thirteen, we did not identify where those monies would be spent. Say if council were to consider an additional one, we may be more thoughtful about that approach.
It looks like the council chambers are twenty-seven hundred square feet, so I'm guessing that two thousand square feet would maybe be like from there on. That looks pretty big.
I mean, Councilmember Recker.
I, I, I will tell you just from, you know, I, I don't wanna sound like I'm advocating, but what you would hear is that this isn't like a Home Depot. There, there's only so many products that they sell. There's only so many different strains of, of cannabis that they're gonna be selling. So it would be, it almost kind of regulates itself in the sense that no one's going to come into a, you know, like, a store the size of, you know, Home Depot and in the very middle of like, you know, we've got like one thing there, so, um, because they're paying the overhead, they're paying the rent, so most are not gonna look.
They can't grow plants or anything like that.
Pardon?
They can't grow plants.
Yeah, they're not cultivation facilities. Yeah, we don't allow for cultivation within the city. From a retail standpoint, thanks to you.
So, um, uh, I, uh, my comments are a tale of three comments. So first of all, I, the biggest, my biggest concern right now with our marijuana industry is, is the, is the Silverstem parking lot is dangerous. And people pulling in and out of, um, Broadway, the problem is I drive up and down Broadway, and that's more of a location thing. Thank you, Littleton Boulevard, that other street that's completely.
The big one.
Perpendicular to Broadway. Um, so that, that's my biggest concern about our current marijuana situation. I would be remiss, um, based on my, kind of my prior work on the school board, the, um, the director of social emotional learning, Nate Thompson, would, um, argue against any, um, um, reduction in kind of our restrictions on marijuana. He feels like there's problems with our students accessing marijuana, so any change that loosens things, he, I think he would advocate against. But he would also, you know, in, in our work with the school district, my time on the school district, this issue of, of, um, vapes, vaping, um, paraphernalia being something that people can hide, that was the big problem, is that you could just hide all your, all your pot. And it was really easy for kids to bring it into school, and I'm, I don't think that's something that we're really talking about here. So that the problems that the school district is facing, um, were not problems that we're addressing currently through our, our licensure. And so I, I see those as separate issues. You know, the research after marijuana, um, was legalized, the, it, the, you know, the Healthy Kids Colorado was the main tool that we surveyed kids around their use of drugs. And that survey did not show increases in use of drugs in our schools. But the professionals within the school district weren't confident that that was, um, uh.
Accurate?
Accurate. I would say if we, and this is, I, I apologize for bringing up the tax increase, but if we do bring up the tax increase, I think, you know, su- supporting a, uh, drug counselor in the school district might be a, a good use of those funds. They usually have to support their drug counselors using grant funds. Um, and so it's a very precarious kind of position, and that might be something that we could do to move this in the right direction. All that said, I feel like I pretty strongly agree with Patrick. This, this all, I don't have any strong feelings about any of these things. I'm, hours are fine, the two, two thousand to four thousand square feet feels fine. The, um, um, changing the amount for medical feels fine. So, um, I just feel, so I realize I voiced a lot of negative things, but I felt like I just needed to carry the water for my former colleagues and would, uh, that's what they, the concerns I heard when I was at the school district. I personally don't have any concerns and I'm fine with all of it.
To, to clarify on the hours question, would you be open to the eight AM to midnight or would you have a different hour?
I don't.
Proposal?
It, they're, that, that all feels.
Okay.
I'm, I'm indifferent.
Okay, and to clarify on the square footage, you think extending to four thousand rather than a unspecified?
I like the, I like the four thousand foot recommendation. That's right. I do like the four thousand foot recommendation.
And I do think the school board or youth center should be in the business. I would like to hear from them as proactively.
Yeah, Nate would be the right person. I mean, the school board, obviously, like, could also have an opinion, but.
Um, I'll start with the easy one. Um, you had mentioned the two greater than two percent limit was because of rural areas or not rural areas. Of rural area anymore.
Correct, or those persons that may be homebound or have mobility challenges that make it difficult for them to get to the dispensary. That's the purpose of that state law, which allows for a, I guess, a physician to recommend more than the two ounces prescribed in the state.
So they don't have to go trouble. I, I, I don't have too much trouble with that if it makes it easier for somebody that needs it medically. I would advocate if we increase the square footage, that we still keep a limit, kind of, kind of keeping it more, uh, small townish, less, um, Home Depot-ish, for lack of a better term. I struggle with the hours of operations for the same reason, um, that have already been mentioned. How does it impact the neighbors, especially the ones, um, along Littleton Boulevard? And I think it would be great to hear from the residents to see what the impact would be. I don't mind so much the eight o'clock, it's the ten to midnight. That's what kind of, um, that's where I'm struggling. And I would love to get some community engagement on that, just from the people that live close by.
Okay, so we've had two folks now that are seeking some more community engagement on the hours, three.
I'm in the same vote.
The same vote, okay, great.
I'm not the anti-community engagement vote here, let's be clear about that.
Okay, well, I'll carry that flag now.
And I think finally, like, like a survey, it doesn't even have to be a postcard, it could even be an email thing, hey, the city council is considering changing these hours. What are your thoughts?
I, yeah, I agree.
It doesn't have to be like.
Yeah, it could be, uh, yeah, a postcard with a, go online or you get a paper survey or whatever, because people don't know what's going on here at city council. And all of a sudden it happens and they.
I can.
Comment or.
No, please, go ahead.
Um, from a scheduling and timing standpoint, we had intended this study session and then with council's direction, if you chose to move forward, we're gonna bring this back quickly. What, for a first reading, uh, potentially even next week. And then, um, have second reading prior to council's break, which starts for like the, the last two weeks of, of June. You don't have another study session planned until July twenty-third, that's the first study session after the break. And we had planned a, a, a discussion of, of council's intent on the potential sales tax in- increase on retail marijuana for that evening.
Would you need the date of?
Twenty-third, so.
Of May?
Of July.
Of July.
Because we're really within a month of the break effectively. So to do more community engagement, even if it is an email kind of survey and more of that needs to be kind of processed and then brought back in another, more to council, might put us, be, be, put us beyond your, your break for these, these rule changes to come, to come back to you for more discussion on these changes, which in, in order to, we really do need to have that, a study session on, um, the potential sales tax increase July twenty-third. So that if you choose to move forward with that, we can get the election actions ready for you. So all of that to say, if you would like, and you know, staff will, uh, will, can, uh, very much do the additional public engagement if that's council's direction. But, um, if you also wanna keep the rules discussion separate from election, which I think especially once it's on the ballot, we, we, we do. Or even if it's planned for that, we do, um, then you might wanna have your next, uh, study session on, on this, this topic, probably of, first of, of twenty twenty-five.
Can I put out a bit of a counter argument in the sense that the, um, increase in the recreational sales tax, while both impact each other, they're not necessarily dependent on one another?
Yeah, that's true.
So, you know, obviously the projected, uh, sales tax revenue would, would change depending on the nature of the situation and the rules. But, um, that is still something we can move forward independent because it sounds like we have some clear consensus about doing community engagement specifically on the hours. And I'm assuming not the square footage nor the medical, is that?
I, I'm really about the hours personally.
Or it, is this community engagement survey incorporating more than just hours?
I'd say all three things.
All three things? Does anyone else feel the same?
Yeah.
Two?
And just for my thought, I, we, it's really your, your wisdom on an election question if you get there. Um, I, I, I think, you know, Steve's right, this, you, you could kind of finish one as you're starting the, the other. Um, but you might have your own thoughts about how that works.
I agree with Steve. I think they can be independent.
Yeah, I, I, I think we can move forward as scheduled with the ballot, um, question.
Discussion.
As planned, but we will slow walk this and potentially include maybe all three. If we're sending out one piece of communication, might as well ask all three questions that are under consideration. Um, that's, you know, we're not being charged by the letter, so, um, I mean, we are, but.
And I would say, you know, we could probably talk in fifteen homes, twenty homes, uh, that are around that, within a hundred yards of that facility, uh, that are affected by the traffic and by the potential noise. So I don't think it's a huge engagement that we're asking for.
I think it could be a postcard, go online and fill it out. I mean, you have to create the survey, and if you are not computer savvy or don't wanna do it online.
Brian needs a walk-in tomorrow.
Yeah, make an arrangement to get, mail the paper copy or something.
Takes a, a little work.
It takes work. I'm not saying it's.
Some work and some time to do it.
So it sounds like we've got some consensus on doing a limited community engagement. Um, I hadn't actually made my comment yet. Let me also put out there that we are biasing our sample pretty heavily. Those who are adjacent to these retail establishments are not necessarily ones shopping there. There is a, you know, the, if, if we were to do a survey and if we were wanting to get an objective opinion about this, the residents are gonna be the most biased against any sort of change in operating hours, quite frankly. So if that is the, if that is the result you want to hear, that's the result you'll get from that survey. However, if you want to do a survey about how does the community feel, how do people who purchase retail marijuana feel about those changes? That is a different story. So, um, you know, I think, I'm just, I'm putting it out there that that is just a biased sample.
I agree. The interest in engagement that I was hearing from some of the comments was in hearing from those adjacent, from those most.
Correct.
Adjacent, so, you know, if, if that meets, I would say that is more doable engagement than an entire community.
Absolutely.
Survey on this question, so, but I see your point, um, so. So maybe leave Silverstam out of the, eh, eh, survey and just say a business is considering staying open till midnight.
I wasn't actually, in my comment, asking the city staff to do anything. I was thinking literally I have not talked about this with anybody and I'm going to start. Asking random people their opinions, neighbors, other people who live in Littleton, if that's all right.
Council's inclined to get that feedback. I mean, maybe ten PM is too late. Maybe it should be.
I think definitely you're right. It's biased group. I wasn't thinking that at all. I was just thinking I, people don't know what's going on. They don't. I haven't heard about this. I don't have an opinion on it. I think if I was asked, I'd probably, and understood the situation, I'd probably say it's fine.
Maybe it's a simple postcard that goes out to, you know, to the surrounding area, just saying, hey, first reading is happening next week. Please show up and, or for second reading or whatever the dates are, express your concerns.
That is another way to get at this is.
Can we put it in the Littleton report?
Next long lead time.
Well, that's what I asked.
I think maybe staff can come back to us with a communication outreach strategy to kind of fast track this.
We can do, do that by email, and I, I think I'm hearing interest in, well, if I'm hearing, hearing that you'd like folks to know and be able to come comment on these proposals. We can let folks, let the, uh, let, let residents know that, um, the council's discussing these, these factors. Here's when the first, first reading of the ordinance will be heard, um.
Community does not know what that means, first reading, so, so I think we have to translate that.
Say there's a meeting, we'll be hearing input on that.
And really, do we wanna hear a first reading, like, comment on, from folks?
We don't usually.
Cause there's no public comment. They'd have to come during public comments, un, general public comment.
Well, it's not. Right. Right.
So that could be confusing.
We could, there are ways, I think we could potentially structure it to, um, have something, like, pulled off consent agenda for first reading to have a short presentation. I think also the community, those who are interested would also benefit from some of the information that we heard here tonight from PD as well as economic development to put what is being asked into some context.
Do we want to ask a little dumb question? Why can't you buy marijuana before ten o'clock? Maybe before nine o'clock?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, why, why do you have to have these things there?
This meeting's going late.
I, I, no, I don't get it.
Forty-five minutes.
I, I don't get it. Why you say, well, the door closes at ten, I have to get there before ten?
You ran out?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, this, I mean, this is no different from the blue laws that people put in place for liquor stores and.
You're going to council meetings.
Sure, that's what, that's why I'm equating it.
They, they.
Look, it's an addictive substance, so there's reasons for that.
The, but the blue laws feel really silly to me, quite frankly. I mean, that's why we don't, can't buy a car on Sundays.
So, uh, anyway, I'll, I'll throw in my opinion, I, you know, I didn't voice on these three things, but, um, I am actually okay from eight to midnight. I'm okay with not specifying square footage. There's truly no, if you ask folks in this industry, there's truly no risk of Home Depot style marijuana institutions cropping up. Considering how difficult it is to make a margin in this industry nowadays, it's tending to sway more towards smaller boutique owned places. Um, and especially in suburbs like ours that have a certain economic, um, class, quite frankly, um, that is typically what folks tend to want.
I was hoping for a Bass Pro Shop with like the tank in the middle and we could just have like stone fish swimming around.
There are those and it's a horribly unpleasant experience. Um, and the quantity on the restriction for medical, I think I'm in line with everyone else saying that, uh, I'm fine just aligning with state law. Um, the, I, you know, from the hours of operation, again, eh, you know, hearing from, uh, PD that we're not necessarily put any, putting anyone at additional risk. If we are considering, uh, this marginal tax increase on recreational sales, I think it is only fair to just treat them as we would a business community to say, how can we best support you in offsetting costs? And this is one pretty low, uh, low lift effort in doing so, that will have basically no impact on the local market in and of itself. I mean, in terms of like generating new, new users, but. I mean, in terms of like generating new, new users, but, um, that's, that's where I'm coming from, so, uh, I think we've got direction.
And we will come back with the strategy, likely the, um, email update, just on how we're gonna engage, uh, to make sure that the, the community knows, especially that a resident's in the area there, um, of when fir- first reading will be conducted and, um, we'll move forward. I am hearing majority, I won't say consensus, but, you know, that, uh, most of council is, um, okay to put into the ordinance the changes as presented on the last slide, so with, um, the one thing, the four thousand square feet sounds like a good next step, I, I didn't hear majority support for no, for no, no limit, of course, that's not on the slide. Reed, could you?
I didn't draft that slide, that's why I originally showed it.
It did feel like the weakest slide.
Clearing.
So.
What are we proposing to the residents, are we proposing that they come and hear something about eight to midnight and four thousand square feet?
We're considering these changes, you know, to these areas, the, you know, council agenda, um, agenda materials may be found here, you know, please come, um, you know, your, your, your in- input will be, be heard on this, this date, and then I think we can explain the process of public comment, um, during that meeting, for that, that meeting.
So they just come in and they're regular public comment?
Right.
If, if there's any interest.
Be clear with that, so, okay.
I don't wanna blindside anybody.
No.
Yeah, and we haven't heard about this, and that's what we're saying, if we're representing the citizens, we need to kind of get a feel from what they think.
Okay, so I think staff has direction, we.
We may play, play with the dates just to kind of, uh, finish this after the break if we, we need to, because we, we do wanna give time to, to put, put out the word effectively so people do know that it's happening, so.
It's okay, and we'll proceed forward with the sales tax discussion as scheduled and planned, so.
Sounds good.
All right, with that, uh, any other, I know we had some long-winded announcements, if anyone wanna make one, you have any?
You can saddle for them.
Yeah, exactly, uh, I think that, uh, I think that about ends us for this evening. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.